DePietro.
Here.
Fallon.
Here.
Kinnon.
Murphy.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Lucy.
Here.
First order of business.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, term is referred by the number 301, series of 2011, having considered the same, make the following report. Be ordained that section 200.2 of chapter 12 of the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended by rezoning a parcel of land on Bennett Highway from Resident A to Highway Business. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendment. By adding the language, this amendment shall not apply to applications for building permits or occupancy permits filed prior to the date of the first publication and notice of the public hearing on the amendment, September 28, 2011. Counselor Bucci, the committee.
On Counselor Bucci's motion receiving the committee report, all in favor? Aye, opposed, Counselor Bucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. This paper that is before us tonight, which I do hope gets full endorsement of the council, is a paper that's been designed to address the construction of a billboard up on Route 1 south of Bennett Highway. What is before us is that in the process of the current business partner with the religious organization that owns this particular property that the current billboard has been sitting on, that property is actually zoned, Resident A. What we've done, we've had a joint public hearing with the planning board and their favorable support of the rezoning request, is to move this property from Resident A to Highway Business for the appropriate use. The use has been, for as long as I can remember, there's been a billboard constructed, has created no impediment to the neighborhood, and moving this along, which is what I do hope tonight would occur, will help accelerate the process to get a billboard constructed so that there are some funds and resources that are provided back to the owner of that property and that would allow that set of funds to be utilized, as it has been historically, for the support of that religious organization that also provides a significant amount of work and resources here to the city for families. So tonight before you is the request, that is, to rezone that particular area from Resident A to Highway Business.
Thank you for Counselor Bucci. Any questions for Counselor Bucci? Seeing no lights on Counselor Bucci's motion to amend according to the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. On Counselor Bucci's motion to amend, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Anderson. Bucci.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
DePietro.
Yes.
Fallon.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes. On Counselor Bucci's motion to suspend rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On Counselor Bucci's motion to ordain, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Anderson.
Yes.
Bucci.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
DePietro.
Yes.
Fallon.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes, motions in the air. Next order of business.
Under suspension and docket rules resolved, this is the sense of the city council that the traffic commission installs slow children signs on Webber Street. Counselor Kinnon.
On Counselor Kinnon's motion to suspend docket rules, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion's adopted.
Under suspension and docket rules resolved, this is the sense of the city council that the traffic commission installs slow signs on Chief Street in both directions. Counselor Kinnon.
On Counselor Kinnon's motion to suspend docket rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Kinnon.
Yes, once again, Chief Street has become a major cut through going from Broadway to Eastern Ave and vice versa. There is some signage, very old, on one end of the street, but we really need to upgrade it, particularly coming in off of Route 99, Broadway. It's become a real problem there, people speeding through as a cut through, so, thank you.
Any question for Counselor Kinnon? Seeing no lights on Counselor Kinnon's motion to pass, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Docket is clear.
Docket is clear. We do have the mayor that has come down tonight to talk about public safety, so please alight for the mayor.
As you recall, I think I was here in April with Chief Holland and Mr. Rodriguez, and although the chief sends his apologies, we had a mix-up in the schedule coming before the council. We thought we would be here last week, and he had committed to an event that takes him out of town this evening, so he won't be part of the presentation, but I do carry some information for the department on his behalf. Mr. Rodriguez is here to do some update on the technological part of what it is we're here to talk about this evening. Again, if you recall, in April, what we talked about was the department, specifically the police department, was going to undertake a series of initiatives to address some incidents that had occurred primarily in the late summer, early fall of 2010, a series of violent incidents that shook the community. And at that time, we came down and said we intended to put in place and implement a series of things that would take some time to roll out. And again, if you recall, some things were done immediately in conjunction with some of our neighboring law enforcement departments, specifically the sheriff's department, some of our surrounding communities, Mr. Leonie's office from the district attorney of Middlesex. But then in April, we began, under the chief's guidance, to roll out a series of other phases of this plan, and that's what we're here to update you on. Told you we'd try to come back on every six-month basis, and that's the effort here this evening. What we were trying to do was to address what had taken place, and we had a couple of goals in mind as part of this implementation plan. On both a regional and a local level, we wanted to address the type of activity that had occurred in order to deter it and, to any extent possible, to prevent similar activity going forward. After Mr. Rodriguez makes his presentation, kind of sum up and tell you that we have had no incidents over this past intervening eight to nine months, and that's a good thing, whether or not they can all be attributable to the steps that have been taken and implemented is not something we can say for sure, but we know that what has taken place has at least produced some very productive results. On a regional basis, we did what some of you have read about and what the chief had reported on. We've implemented a regional collaboration among several police departments in the Malden area whereby officers from each department are sworn to be able to make arrests and patrol in the particular communities that normally would be without their jurisdiction. So for instance, we've had several sworn officers in the cities of Chelsea, Revere, and Everett, and some other surrounding communities, and so on. Those officers have been sworn in under the clerk's guidance as peace officers in the city of Malden. So that activity in combination and in collaboration with those surrounding communities has been in effect from about the first of the year onward. And the chief, again, if you desire to hear from him specifically on some of the results of that activity, would be glad to come down and give you an updated report. He also continues to share and collaborate with the other surrounding law enforcement agency. He continues the collaboration with the DA's office and with the Middlesex Sheriff's Department as well. So again, if you desire an update from the chief directly on that, he can return and provide that information to the council. He's continued his partnership, the chief has, with the Malden Housing Authority specifically. So over the course of the intervening eight months since we were here last, he has continued to work with the authority in an effort to put in detailed officers at a series of locations that the housing authority can support with funding to the police department. So that has worked out extremely well. We thank Mr. Finn, who's the executive director there, for his continued cooperation and collaboration with our department. But at several locations, including the Newland Street Housing Development, the Linden Housing Development, and the senior housing at 630 Salem Street, there's been the support for dedicated personnel from the department to be on site over the course of the summertime specifically, but also continues to this targeted time as well. The most important step he took, which is what we talked about when we were here in the spring, was to formulate a separate unit within the department. For lack of a better term, we call it a neighborhood interdiction unit. It's a combination of plainclothes officers and uniformed officers, and most recently mixed in with some motorcycle activity to hit whatever we like to term them, hotspots or incident saturated areas where the department believes that these additional resources, in addition to the complement of people that are out there on a daily and on an evening basis as well, will target certain areas that data shows the department or just general anecdotal information shows the department. And that can come, and I know it has come on several occasions from independent counselors, it's come from my office, and from some other sources as well, that the department uses as a guide to have these officers conduct activity in and around neighborhoods. They can go to problem housing sites, they can go to park areas, they can go to construction areas, any number of locations that have been specifically targeted over the intervening eight or nine months have seen the attention of this neighborhood interdiction group. And I'm sure that each one of you or the majority of you should have stories in your own wards where the unit and the personnel within the unit has been used effectively. That is part of a carve-out that we look to do within the ranks of both the superior officers and the patrol force. It's worked extremely well, and again, if you desire some specific information, data from the chief, I'm sure he'd be glad to come down and provide you with that. In addition, there were a series of technology initiatives that we told you we were going to roll out as well, being coordinated between the police department and our IT department. If you recall, the chief was very high on rolling out a series of what are called license plate readers. We now have five installed throughout the community, two stationary, three mobile. These devices sit on the back and on the front of patrol cars that go into all sections of the community, are able to read a license plate and in real time, split-second time. That data is transferred into the Malden Police Department and is also commingled with information that is provided by the registry of motor vehicles. A report can come back that refers to the license plate that has any kind of problem activity for either the vehicle or the operator, that is known to be the operator through registry of motor vehicle records. And in real time, that information comes back within our department and is dispersed to all personnel within the department, and as a result of which, obviously, deployment can happen accordingly under the direction of the officer in charge or the street sergeants who have immediate disposal of the information. What we've also done is deploy a series of cameras, as we told you we would. I think in the April meeting, Anthony actually gave a demonstration of location, I believe we used the back of City Hall, the Orange Line Station at Malden Center. We have now deployed 20 at a variety of locations, east, west, north, and south within the community, and Anthony can give you an updated demonstration of how that activity is working. It receives information, again, in real time, pipes it back into the police department. That information can be observed and is currently being observed by departmental personnel on a series of screens that have been installed within the department. And again, depending upon the usefulness of the information in real time, deployment can be made either through a street sergeant and or the officer in charge. The facilities also have the additional benefit of banking the information that they record, and incidents can be pulled out to be referred to at a later date, depending upon any particular event that may have occurred in an area where the recording can be going on. So all of those initiatives are in place and operational. I would suggest that if you wouldn't mind having the demonstration again, Mr. President, that Mr. Rodriguez could give you a fast overview of how this works, and you'll be able to see for yourself again in the real time how the system is providing benefits to the department's ability to be able to take a look at a variety of locations around the city. So Anthony, you want to give it a go?
Sure.
All right. And if you would mind, Mr. President, I'll come back and answer any questions.
Sure, great, thank you. Good evening. Hopefully, my demonstration goes a little bit less problematic as my last one. Won't be bumps in the road. As the mayor was saying, we've now deployed at least 20 cameras across the city in various Before I move forward with the demonstration, I would like to thank PNC, Steve Riley, one of the contractors that worked very closely on the project. The chief fire department has been and police department have been unbelievably cooperative and assistive in allowing me to use assets from their departments to facilitate this. Facilities Department, DPW, my staff, obviously, the support from the council and the mayor is greatly appreciated. Here we go. Just take a second to warm up. What we're going to look at is a live feed at the DVR unit that is over at the police station right now. I'll try to maximize this for various areas. The cameras will be coming online sporadically as they make their links. One of the benefits of the system is that because it is fully a wireless system, none of these assets have been really hardwired. We can move them around as we see fit. We have a number of assets. You can see on some of these images where we have a night vision-type functionality that happens with some of the cameras when they go into low-light environments. Oh, thank you. This is our dog park in Trachten. If we go back. And all this is streaming in real time presently. We have a number of them in, let's see. This is Linden Square. Real-time pictures. Anywhere that you place and click within the frame, the camera will follow and move to. So these images can be manipulated at the police station in real time. All the streams are being recorded. We have roughly a, this is, what you see here is a privacy filter. There is a house here, so we mask off the house, so you cannot peer into anything that is not in the public space. So this is down at the intersections. We can zoom around in the areas at will as well as jump back. We had an incident today at the T Station that was mitigated, and we're working with the police department on some of the feeds for the recordings that were taken of that event. Maplewood, let's see if we have. Oak Grove, Justin Square, South Broadway. We have them pretty spattered out across the city in a good representative coverage zone. This is up in, at one of my favorite restaurants. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer any of them.
Open up questions, Counselor Kinnon.
Yes. Could you show us a demonstration of actually zooming in? Oh. Anyplace, so a police officer would see, let's say, a large group of kids gathering, could they zoom in?
If we wanted to see, I can tell you if this car is inspected or not. Is registration's valid? And he is. These have the ability to image a license plate from roughly 100 or 200 yards away, depending upon the cameras. We have a number of cameras, some more specialized than others, and they have greater ability to focus farther distances. It's analogous to playing a golf game. You couldn't really do it all with one club, so we have various cameras for various situations. We have thermal cameras, we have cameras that are, this is high definition, this is all in 720p, I believe. We have cameras for thermal night vision, some that are just for high definition in close areas like this, and some that can zoom in from a very, very far distance away. If we're on a high building, let's say, you'd want to use a camera that was a little telescopic type of view. If we look at some of the tot lots, this is the Salem Wood. And this camera's perched on the corner of the structure, so this is acquiring the tot lot as well as the pass-through area that goes through from the park side all the way over to Route 60. And again, the beautiful part is that we can move these assets around as we see fit. Things change. None of them have to be permanently placed. This is the ferryway parking lot, this Linden School area, as well as Maplewood Square. This is a live feed off the top of the camera within Maplewood. That kind of gives you a bird's eye view of things.
Counselor Fallon.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Rodriguez. Did you say that these are not hardwired, these units, the 20 units?
No, they can be moved around at will. They all have wireless uplinks. Some of them have fiber back halls.
Are they battery operated, or do they rely on voltage?
They rely on voltage, but they've all been sistered with UPS, uninterruptible power supplies. So in the event that you lose power, the system will still function for about 45 minutes until the power comes back on.
So we're reliant on the utility company, National Grid, to provide the power?
Yes.
To the cameras?
Um.
Okay. And I'm assuming we've, let's just, because this is something that has come up on the ground, actually, do we have some type of collaboration or contract with National Grid that provides for us to be able to install these?
We usually, we work collaboratively with them. We have chapter 90 poles in the city that we pretty much own, so I tend to use those primarily. National Grid and Dan Cameron were very helpful in the Trachten Park area for putting on a pole there, so we do work with National Grid.
So when your department has been installing these?
Correct.
It hasn't? Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Following up on that point, do double poles impede the installation of any of the cameras?
We don't place any of these assets on poles, per se.
Right. In other words, has that caused you to place them in other spots that you might otherwise place the cameras?
Yeah, we tend to stay away from telephone poles because there's so many ownership issues there.
Okay.
So we try to keep away from the poles, especially with double poles. We wouldn't ever put an asset on something like that.
Okay, so the cameras are placed generally on public buildings where?
Buildings, chapter 90 poles, various areas around, some of them are flexible in nature.
Okay.
We work with the police department, some of them are in the surveillance assets, and so we have a mixture of things.
Okay. Any of them on private facilities?
Let's see. The, yeah, that one right there is on the building in Maplewood Square, and the owner was nice enough to allow us access. Obviously, we can't just throw something up on somebody's roof. I met with the owner of the facility, and he was more than happy to have, being a good community partner, was more than happy to have the asset there.
So there's been no cost or anything?
Nope.
Okay. Let me ask just a couple more questions. What's the coordination with the police department on where the cameras should go? I sent your expertise on the cameras themselves, but who says, you know, we should have, you know, 10 on the east side and then 10 on the west? I mean, how does that all work?
I've been with Chief Holland, and there are some hotspot areas, so we've kind of dispersed them in main thoroughfares and the parks specifically, because there tends to be a little bit of activity there.
Okay.
You know, kids being vandals and whatnot. So this will help mitigate some of that. And we also have some signage that was created for various areas around the city. This is an example of something that would be put into a park, and this would be a little bit more sparse. It's a various group of signage that we can move around when we have something in place, just as an additional deterrent.
Do you find that cities and towns are using signage or not using it?
Yes.
No star? How quickly would it take to move a camera? Let's say something develops somewhere and we need to move, how quickly can it happen?
From point A to point B?
Mm-hmm.
Depending upon what kind of wireless technology needs to be put in place, two hours.
Okay.
A reasonable timeline.
And have you heard anything further about cities and towns, you know, not only in the state but across the country? Are any of them moving to that so-called, I think we talked about it before, virtual watches, where they can actually watch themselves what's going on in their respective neighborhood?
Honestly, I have not. I haven't had the time.
Okay.
But I'm sure that there are some out there that are doing that, and we can certainly explore some of that.
Okay.
As we move down the road.
Final question. I don't know if you can speak to it, maybe the mayor will. Have you seen any results from the cameras? I mean, would you be privy to that info?
Yes and no. I mean, I think that a number of councilors had, were kind enough to have community meetings, and the response that I got from those has been kind of amazing, actually, because I'll be in the supermarket and somebody will walk up to me and say, you know, "I was at that presentation you gave." And they're very embracing of it. They like the fact that, you know, there's an extra set of eyes out there. I think there's a perception of overall safety that comes with some of this technology. Quantifying it is a bit difficult, but if it helps one person in the future down the road, then it would be totally worth it.
And this is just phase one, right? We're going to be looking additionally to do more, I think, as we?
That would be the decision that the council would have to make, and I would have to need some planning and probably a vacation.
Right. And when we do do these, you purchase them, you put them up? Generally speaking, what's the life cycle on them?
It depends. We've lost, I mean, even in the initial deployment, we lost a couple of units to lightning strikes, to inclement weather, a bad failure of a seal, a water seal on a unit. They were under warranty, obviously, but, you know, the timeline of getting the unit sent back and then getting a new one, getting that thrown up, kind of delays things here and there. Life cycle, this technology is probably a good five years.
Five years.
These are very, very nice cameras.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. You covered a number of my questions, Mr. Counselor Christensen, so thank you. I do, just following up on a couple of Counselor Christian- I do, just following up on a couple of Counselor Christensen's questions. What's the average cost of a unit?
Average cost of a unit is about $3,000.
So very reasonably priced for a five-year lifespan. And the 20 that have been installed, do we have any remaining in stock that are still waiting to be installed, or is that the whole?
Yes, we have another four. I kind of mixed and matched a couple of the cameras and later found out, unfortunately, that there are some proprietary issues with the software that makes them a little bit incompatible. So I'll be throwing those assets over at the high school, probably, because we're going to be deploying some more cameras there, and we'll backfill those with cameras that are more suited to this kind of specialized application.
So all the schools today are covered by a camera? Is that a correct statement?
Except Forestale. Forestale's difficult because it lies within a kind of a valley. That's going to be rectified once we expand our fiber program.
Now, we had talked about the fiber program possibly coming down, I believe Bainbridge Street, not Bainbridge, Apier Street?
Mm-hmm.
And is that anywhere, is that moving along, or is that something that is going to take a number of months or years to?
A couple of months, probably.
A couple of months.
Weather is coming in, the weather dictates a lot of this.
Is there anything that you need from the council in order to facilitate getting the fiber into the Forestale area?
I will let you know.
Okay. You know, we have a huge pedestrian walkway in the Forest Street corridor from just, you know, morning, noon, and night, whether it's folks going to the T or it's folks taking advantage of what we call the two-and-a-half-mile track that surrounds Forestale, Lebanon, Apier and Main Street. So, you know, it is an area that I think is a very high-profile area that I would definitely like to see some coverage on, just from a, you know, protection standpoint.